I see no cards. Well, this is a time set aside for the public to express its views on the 2016-17 adopted budget and education protection account expenditure plan. Hearing no response, I now declare this public hearing closed.
You got it.
Oh, I thought they had to fill out a card. Oh, sorry. Okay. Is there anyone who would like to?
Come on down.
Come on down and talk about the 2016-17 adopted budget and education protection account expenditure plan.
Now you can say.
Hearing none. I now declare this public hearing closed.
Consent agenda.
Okay, 5.1. Any item on the agenda, any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately if a member of the Board of Trustees so requests.
Yes, I have some I'd like to pull.
Trustee Zia.
5.7 through 5.9 and 5.15.
Okay, 5.7, 5.9.
No, 5.7 through 5.9.
Oh, through.
So it's 5.7, 5.8, 5.9.
Eight, okay.
And 5.15.
And then 5.15.
And 5.15, yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 5.7, 5.8, 5.9, and 5.15.
So moved.
Second.
Are you seconding because I think trustee Kellogg made the motion?
Yeah.
Second, yes.
Okay. So it's been moved by trustee Kellogg, seconded by trustee Zia. Please call the roll.
I will, once I remove the items.
Okay.
5.7, 5.8.
5.9 and 5.15.
5.9. Lot of clicking, checking boxes.
Yes, 1.5.
Motion by, for the consent agenda?
By Kellogg and seconded by Zia.
And Zia. Okay. Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, 5.7. Trustee Zia.
Yes, thank you, President Baxter. So I understand we only had one bid that we received for this award for the purchasing of welding equipment to Haas factory outlet in the amount of $158,826 and some change. I'd like to understand, how, for how long was this advertisement placed? How long did it be advertised for? And then what's the difference between the bid and the engineer's estimate? And then lastly, do we know why we only received one bid?
Vice President Gable?
Yes, so the bid was first posted on our website on August 6th. We advertised in the Press Telegram on August 17th and August 24th, and then the bid closed on August 31st. The equipment is very highly specialized, and so it's not uncommon to only receive one bid.
And did we have a rough order of magnitude or an estimate, internal estimate, that we had created for the equipment?
There was no engineer's estimate, but in looking at comparisons of other equipment purchased by other districts, this did come in lower than what other folks have paid.
Okay, great. And then on, can I proceed with my other questions, President Baxter, on the other items?
I think, don't we have to vote on these separately?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we have to, so that I need a motion. Okay, motion by trustee Zia.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kellogg to approve 5.7.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. 5.8, acceptance of project completion.
Yes, President Baxter, it's a little bit limited information here. I'm a little bit taken back that we only have one sentence for accepting a project. Typically, we get more. It's been progress that we've seen, so I don't want to see us go back. How, what was the original bid for this? And what's, yeah, and when did it, when was the contract let? And then why is it a purchase order? What kind of work did they do?
Vice President Gable?
So this was the replacement of the field of the stadium, so both the football field and the track. And back at the board meeting of February 23rd, the board authorized us to use the CMAS agreement for the purchase, and that's why it was put on a purchase order, because the board allowed us to do the CMAS agreement.
You know, thank you. Without that explanation, I don't think we would have known. So if it's possible for us to provide a little bit more description, also for the benefit of the public, since they have the right to know as well, I'd appreciate that. That's all I have on that item.
Move approval of 5.8.
It's, I thought that trustee Zia and Kellogg.
No, there was no motion on 5.8.
Oh, okay. So trustee Otto, you made the motion?
Yes.
Second.
Trustee Zia, call for the question.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, 5.9, contract award.
Yes, President Baxter, so I see that we have a contract for not exceed amount of $250,000 for, starting July 1st, 2016, till June 30th, 2021. So I'm assuming this has been backdated, because we're in September, and one is, why are we backdating to, I mean, have these rendered services already that now we're trying to go retroactively? That's one. And two, was this contract competitively procured?
Vice President Gable, or is this Vice President Delgado, or?
I can start, and if Rose wants to add anything, she may. No, this was not competitively procured in accordance with Government Code Section 53060. We are not required to competitively bid any professional services. Since this is legal services, we did not competitively bid it. And the reason we, the reason it's backdated is we will enter into the contracts when the requisitions come through purchasing, and typically, we like to have these contracts be an entire fiscal year, rather than, you know, starting it up on, say, September 14th, day after the board meeting.
So have they, I'm sorry, you may have already answered this, Ann Marie, and I may have missed it. Have they rendered services from July to today?
I wouldn't, Rose is nodding her head yes.
Yes, they have.
So they were operating without a contract in the interim?
We do have a contract with them. This is an extension of their contract.
If it's an extension, why does it say contract award, not an amendment? See, I'm just trying to understand, if this is an extension, it needs to come back as such. If it's not, and if we're backdating for services that's been rendered, technically, they were out of a contract. So I'd like to see that improve in the future. And then just because, I understand, although I do understand as far as the legal services are concerned, that may be a little bit more unique, but just because we're not required to competitively procure for professional services, that doesn't mean we can't and we shouldn't, out of the spirit of transparency and making sure that more businesses can have the opportunity to compete and secure business here at the district. And that's pretty much all I have. Oh, sorry, one last thing. How was the not to exceed value set for $250,000? If since we don't have any other proposals to compare it against, or was that, how do we come up with that number?
Well, it works out to be about $50,000 per year, and so it's just an estimate from human resources of what they think that they may need legal services for.
Is this based on past burn rates?
Yes, yes. We just take an estimate.
All right.
May I ask a question? If you go over $50,000 in 1617, does that carry over till the total amount cannot exceed $250,000?
Correct.
Okay. Then let's have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, trust, moved by trustee Otto, seconded by trustee Zia. Go call.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Sunny Zia? Aye.
Okay, and now we are going to 5.15.
Yes.
Ratification of contracts under $175,000.
Sorry about that. President Baxter, yeah, this one, I'm, the items in question is the, I understand that it doesn't show up on the screen, so I'm going to read the items. So it's for contract number 99737.6, contract with Linda Ann Lingle for an amount of $36,000 for the term, starting July 1st, 2016, going till June 30th, 2017, for communication and government relations services to support student success and workforce development initiatives. My question on this particular one is, I understand that we've let out other contracts with this consultant. I believe it was for lobbying efforts that may be covered by the government relations services, but I'd like to understand how much to date has been awarded to this consultant?
Over what period of time? Between July 1st and now?
No, to, no, no, to date.
Oh.
Because I think we've had multiple contracts with the, and I just want to see for the totality, not just, I'm not picking on this particular consultant. In general, it's hard to tell the expenditures to date, because it's isolated each time. But do we have that information?
Trustee, I mean.
Go ahead, Vice President Gable.
Yes, so this contract is for $36,000, and it covers the fiscal year of 1617. We have had two other contracts in the past with this particular vendor, and the total of those two contracts was $63,000.
So the cumulative to date is how much?
$99,000.
Okay, you know, just, I think it would be prudent for us to include something to that effect, the cumulative value, perhaps in the description section. I see it here and there, and it's very valuable. I would recommend that we add that, so that as trustees, we get an idea of how much to date, and, you know, a more comprehensive picture of who we're awarding to and the expenditures to date. Lastly, on the contract number 99738.4, with Dennis Oliver Kelly for $25,000, July 1st, 2016, till June 30th, 2019. The description states mandated cost reimbursement services, and that doesn't tell me much, so I want to, at least I'm not able to understand what that's for. If you can please provide an explanation, I'd appreciate that.
Vice President Gable?
So this is for legal services in relation to the mandated cost claims that we file with the state. In the past, we used a specialized vendor that used to do that. That vendor retired and went out of business, and so now we've moved over to this law firm that specializes in this throughout the state for all of our mandated cost claims.
And how much do we give back for mandated costs annually? I know this is a three-year contract, but how much?
Well, we aren't, we're getting one-time mandated cost fund payments, and so you will see that in the budget tonight. In 1617, our one-time allocation is about $1.9 million.
Okay.
In the past, what we would do is we would file a claim, and then the state would reimburse us for the expenditures that we filed on that claim. These services are for claims that fall outside of the one-time mandated costs that we hope will get reimbursed for. However, the State Controller's Office is coming out and auditing all of the claims that the districts have made, and are trying to disallow just about all of the costs of where the state doesn't have to pay us anything. So we are using this law firm to file what's called claims reductions with the State Controller's Office, and trying to fight the audits that they've made.
Could I also say, I just thought this person had an odd name, perhaps adding commas?
It's a law firm.
I know, I know.
That's, that's the way that they have it.
Really?
Yes.
All right.
Sorry, trustee Baxter, I have one more.
Sure.
So I'm just wondering again on the terms, was there a reason why these contracts weren't brought to us in June for approval, and we're going again retroactively to July? It concerns me that we, they have rendered services, and we're trying to correct it by backdating.
It's, as the beginning of the year, I would say we have hundreds of requisitions that come in, and so we're trying to prioritize the items that are needed in the classrooms first, to get the college up and functioning. So this is just, you know, we're, we're backlogged a little bit on getting some things done.
I have to tell you, Vice President Gable, that's not an acceptable answer. We need to do better. We, as a board, we need to see these well in advance, not after the fact, and I'm concerned about, you know, just being a little bit in the dark, or, you know, it's just, it puts us in a position that we can't really, we're forced to approve it because it's backdated. You know, that's, that's just the point of information from, for you.
Let me be clear, trustee Zia, nobody is forcing you to approve anything, and please don't make that statement. You can say no to this item. This vendor, if they rendered services, will be paid for his or her services, and that will be it. I don't ever want this board to consider themselves being forced to vote for an item. The challenge we have here is in the volume and the manpower we have to keep up with it and get it to the, to the board. That doesn't mean that services have been rendered, and if they have been rendered and the board wants to not approve of this, is very clear to the vendors that these contracts are only good pending approval of the board, so you always have that out.
Okay, hold on a second here. Let me just make something very clear. We shouldn't penalize a vendor. I'm not suggesting that because they've rendered services that we don't pay them, but we should approve these before the term is up. I mean, if we don't approve them, then technically, they were out of a contract, so how are we supposed to pay them outside of the contract? That's what I'm saying. I'd just like to see that remedied.
And I understand that, the point I was making was that at no time are we forcing the board to approve anything. That's this comment that you made, and I was just correcting it.
Well, I don't think it's your place to correct my comment. Let me, let me finish.
Absolutely my place as a superintendent president.
I don't want to get in an argument with you, Superintendent Oakley. Just acknowledge that it's an error and correct it for the future. We should have, as a, as respect to the board, we should be given ample time for the term of the contract, not have it backdated. And I don't want to make this big showdown about a specific contractor. I just think it's a, it's an important point, and a risk to the district if we don't do otherwise.
Okay, trustee Zia, I appreciate your comments, and could we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Chair, excuse me.
Oh, okay. Trustee Malauulu?
Sorry, just before we vote, Vice President Gable, I just have one quick question.
We don't even have a motion yet.
You don't have a motion?
Yeah.
He made the motion, it hasn't been seconded.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. I just have a question about the term, the three-year term. Is that standard procedure? Just, you know, things change so frequently, and most contracts have a one-year shelf life. Why this one in particular is three years?
It's because working with the State Controller's Office is a very lengthy process, and when you are protesting their audit findings and working with them, and so that's why we have the, the extended amount of term for this. You know, the other thing that I might add is, these are ratification of contracts, and so I have already signed these contracts. The board gave me that authority back in June to sign contracts on behalf of the district, and so these two, these two contracts are contracts that I have signed. We're bringing it back to the board for ratification.
And the ratification is for, to get paid, correct? So if we don't ratify, what happens?
Do you, do you want to answer that?
It is my understanding that if you don't, you have the authority to sign, but you can't pay vendors unless the board approves it. That's the purpose of the ratification. So let's just make that clear. The board has approval authority.
I don't think anybody's contesting that. This is a management issue, and the practice has been that we authorize the signing of these contracts. We've done that way ahead of time, that if we think that there's something wrong, the board can say, wait a minute. But I don't think that there's anybody that's suggesting that there's anything wrong with this, or, I mean, if there's a reason to not ratify that, then that should be spoken, and we can take that into consideration when we make the decision, which we have the legal right to do, to ratify this or not. It's, there's, there's a lot of work that goes on here. I, I mean, I complain from time to time that we don't have enough people answering the phones at the beginning of the year, when people are calling in about classes, but I don't want to hire 25 telephone operators for the full year, and I don't think I want to hire 25 people just so we can get these things out ahead of us a little bit, when there are these other, authority to, to do what is we're doing. I feel very comfortable with, with what we're doing, the way it's being done, and I don't think we're putting us at risk.
Okay. It's been moved by trustee Otto and seconded by trustee Zia. We have the vote.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. 6.1, CCA. Well, I'm going to have trouble with this too. LBCCFA, fa, LBCCFA, Initial Bargaining Proposal to the District Full Contract Renewal. This is a information item?
Right.
So there's no?
No, this is just a sunshine. It's an information item, so that the, the board and the public are aware of what's going to be discussed in contract negotiations.
Okay, and then 6.2 is the district's request?
Correct.
Okay. 6.2, District Initial Bargaining Proposal to LBCCFA Full Contract Renewal. Okay.
7.1.
Oh, do you want to make? No, okay.
My only comment was now 7.1.
Yes. 7.1, Educational Assistance Program for Community College Leadership Program. This is an information item?
It's an action item.
Oh, it's an action item, okay. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Otto, seconded by trustee Kellogg. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, very briefly, excuse me, this is, I think, a great idea. What we're doing is incentivizing our employees to participate in getting higher education, which will help them serve our students and our college better. And the program that they are, that we're being asked to contribute 10% of the tuition for is the Roush Graduate Center doctoral of education in community college leadership program. It's got an outstanding faculty, and at the end of this process, we will have a better educated and hopefully dedicated, because among other things, we've done this, group of employees that will deliver better services to our students. I think it's a great idea and money well spent.
I had a question. Does anybody else have a question? Trustee Kellogg?
I just, just to piggyback on that, because some of, if you look on some of the details to it, and it is really, as we talked at our last meeting, very innovative in many ways. The college will pay its portion of tuition upfront. It's, it's a win for everyone, and it's one of those things that Long Beach City College again should be very proud of, because I asked a question about community colleges. This is really, this is the first among community colleges, and so it's just something you should take great pride in, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what the results are going to be and how people feel the program. But it's, it's just, it's phenomenal for a community college to step in and do things like this. And sometimes we don't stop and really acknowledge some of the really great things this college does, and this is just another example. So congratulations, everyone involved, and best of luck to everyone. 23 people?
We have 20. We had our first class meetings Friday and Saturday last weekend, so we have 20 participants, two of which are sitting in the audience today. They did reports and wrote papers, and as I said, I'm sorry, three, four? I'm sorry. I'm looking right at these guys because they're, Janay, John, Noel, and Amy, all did reports this weekend, and they all wrote papers about what they reported on, and they did a phenomenal job, and I think we will be the best cohort that the National American University John Roush program has ever had, based on our start.
Congratulations.
I just have one question.
Oh, sure, trustee Otto.
Why aren't you studying?
Maybe, maybe this is this week's.
Not paying attention?
Maybe this is this week's lesson. My, I have two questions. First of all, and none of you, of course, would do this, but what if somebody, you know, leaves LBCC during the semester? How are you going to get that money back? Withhold their salary, or?
Well, I'm just going to say, we would hope that nobody would leave during the semester. The 10% tuition assistance from Long Beach City College is for permanent employees here at the college. We actually have one participant that is not currently employed, but she was when she heard about the program, so she is enrolled and fully engaged, and she's not going to receive the 10%, but she does receive the 15% that they have a scholarship tuition assistance program through NAU. So you, you do not have to quit the program if you're not here, you just don't receive the assistance.
Okay, that was my question.
You can continue through the program wherever you are.
Okay, very good. And then the, so that answers my second question, is if they leave, they can still continue. Okay, and are we obligated beyond this year? Because normally, it's a three-year program? Or are we obligated for three years?
Obligated.
Find, is the district 10%?
The tuition assistance, the way it works is that the, the program bills the student, I believe, on a semester basis, so the tuition assistance would be applied every time that bill comes due to the district.
Okay.
So that, you know, we're not paying it all upfront.
No, and I didn't, I didn't imagine that, Superintendent President Oakley. What I meant was that next year, if we feel we can't afford it, are we obligated to continue this program?
You're, you're not obligated, but we, we made a commitment to the participants that the district would make a contribution. Now, that wasn't, it's not a part of the, of the program. They're aware of the risks that are involved, but certainly, if there was a catastrophe and you needed to make a change, you could make a change, but, but I, I think at this point, for all intent and purposes, we made a commitment to the students.
And are they obligated to get the EDD?
The current success that they're having with other cohorts is well over 80%. They just graduated their first cohort, so they just finished their first three-year cohort program. Most of those students have finished their dissertations, so that's an amazing retention rate.
Mark.
I would expect Janay, John, Noel, Amy, and Lee, that we will have, as I said from the beginning, the best retention rates. I mean, it, seriously, this weekend, in our class, we had, President Oakley was a speaker, Dr. O'Banion was a speaker, Dr. Roush was a speaker, Dr. Boggs is the faculty member. It was filled. I mean, the, the time we spent together was really so rich. together was really so rich with information and conversation and discussion. I can't tell you how much I gained from the time I sat and didn't have to present or write a paper, so I can't imagine how they're feeling in terms of what they're learning just from the first face-to-face. It was, it was truly amazing.